What was it doing too long? Started at nine forty-four. I was in the Williams County, President Powers, City. The new president.
Yes. Yes.
What's going on in the next? Um, the Linda Goldrider, you're online. The line council. Well, get to the chapter where it's going. Here, Lucy and Tracy, Vice President. One honestly, Secretary Treasury. No, I have House. I'm not for you. So, you know, it's a thousand. You know, it's a thousand. Amazing. But that changed me. And. Well, I'm a politician, I'm a volunteer politician. Well, can you raise your hand? And. Starting on stage. For us, the president. By the time. The. So, even. It's a big, it's a door. I don't care. To the church. So that I don't want to. I pay the mission. That way I didn't. Or nationality. You know. Inside. Finally. You know, go ahead. There is no religion. Uh, it starts from the very. I tell you, religion. Well, so I. I don't. I just. I charge the other one. About. Feeling. Well, I don't know, I don't. For the national. For. I stand. I see. Which eventually, you know, what? She's gonna have. I think there is. I believe. Uh, there are some. Game. Being. Yeah. Probably. I think. And. So. Action. My. Uh. We want to share the thing with. Uh, which is very bad. Yeah, I'm. This one. And. Uh. So, I don't. Yeah, I'm. I. They. So, it's a good thing they're. But I. You know. That's why. We don't say. We don't say. Uh huh. We are going to. Yeah, thank you very much, Matt. So, we'll be in the picture. Moving on now, the election of the new Secretary, non-Secretary. We're heading Oakland, actually going motion.
Motion.
Marshall. Second. Rita. Okay, with that, we have motion in the second. Now, we had call for nominations, by the nomination.
Nominate.
Nominate. Why did Rita?
Yes.
Here. The other nominations.
Here, can I make a motion to close nomination?
We have motion, close nominations. Second. Rita. With that. Non-Secretary, well, actually, we'll have to vote on this here. With that, we have a nomination for Twilight to be the Secretary of Treasury for NOST. Now, with that, we will head call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand up high. Alex, how do you vote?
Green. Yes.
Thank you. With that, we have a total of. Seven in favor. Oppose. Oh. And abstain. Two. Okay, that. We have, uh, our new nomination for a new Secretary for NOST. Now, Twilight. Twilight Madison, so. Take your seat here. Hey, we have a vote that passes, seven in favors, we're opposed to abstain. Okay, now move on to the adoption of the agenda. Madam Secretary, could you read the agenda into the record? Just the highlight and then basically just.
I know.
Okay.
How about you, outside of us?
I have a, um. High expectation for Secretary.
I got so much money. Really? Wide reading call to order. Two, that was as I said.
Nine.
New role calls that honorable permanent.
We just kept giving the readings, no problem, and then he goes through this, we listen there.
Okay.
The rings, we are going to be the.
Um, two role call. Not this on chapter, or this chapter, around the community government. I think that. Three invitation for election of the Secretary. Five review and adopt and, and agenda. Six approve the last meeting minutes. A, April fifth, twenty twenty five, we're going meeting. B, July seventh, twenty twenty five, special meeting. C, September twenty second. Twenty twenty five, special meeting. Seven reports, government leadership. Eight reports, and also usual chapter president. A, not this on, chapter president, B, with the president, C, shall the community government is president. D, that he can, chapter president. Nine presentation presenters. A, will addressing, will address project updates and discussion. B, senior center updates, Sherlene Yavie and Candace Yavie. Uh, C, Arba updates, Lisa Jim. D, discussion, Navah Nation, burial and cemetery. Ten resolution actions items. One resolution number not twenty-five, two ninety-eight, zero, zero, one approving the Navah Nation District Raising Committee. He identified as the eighteenth Raising, written committee to the Navah Nation. And the three branches of the Navah Nation government.
Two.
Two. Three resolution number not twenty-five, two ninety-eight, that's the. Four resolution not twenty-five, two ninety-eight, there is a three CD, eleventh, and four.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary, if we can to the record. Moving on down to, uh, we did a motion to entertain.
Motion.
Marshall, thank you, second. Second, Willis. Hey, comments, questions regarding the agenda. Put forth the. Motions adding. Extracting.
Here, do we only have one resolution?
Only one resolution for now.
We entertain that after six.
After six?
Yep.
Okay, so you're motioning to move. One. After six, who are getting out down? One number?
Yes.
Eric. Willis, we convert. Here. With that, we have a amendment to the, um, agenda, any other ones? No other ones, okay, so the other thing we're gonna be changing is removing two business. Ten, one. Two, seven. Two, seven, then moving everything up to down. One number. Okay. Call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your hand up high. And, um. How do you, ready book? Alex.
Yes.
How you vote?
Green.
Okay, with that, we have a total of. Nine in favor, opposed. Shay.
Jared, don't you have ten?
There were some people that came in. And their officials. And they were many, thank.
Yep.
And in favor, zero, closed, one state. Okay. There's twelve.
Well. I didn't.
I'll show her. Who else?
Please, please on the line.
We only have one person online, which is, uh, Alex, not an area. Which other official? Yeah, we can see Kindle. Levon, right?
Over here, man.
Levon. Very good. Very easy, very good. Oh, good.
Yeah.
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 Okay. All right, let's go ahead and redo this. All those in favor, raise your hand up high. Okay, nine in here. Alex, I'm assuming you're voting in favor of this?
Yes.
Zero, then myself, I'm abstaining, who's eleven in total. Okay. With that, approval of the agenda has passed, with ten in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Moving on. Approval of last meeting minutes. Again, those items were emailed to you guys, uh, earlier. Uh, we can go ahead and quickly go over it.
Yeah.
Marshall?
Take a motion to accept the, you know, it's, you already received that, and you should have brought.
I'll say that.
Thank you, one second. Okay. Comments, questions?
Nope.
No, you remain the. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, it's set on the meeting minutes. He. Alex, how do you vote?
In the favor?
And. Oppose. Same, one. Um, the approval of the last meeting minutes for April fifth, July seventh, and September twenty-second, all pass, with ten in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Okay, moving on to number seven, A. Uh, resolution action items. Um, Madam Secretary, go ahead and read, we're heading into the record.
Um, number one, resolution number not twenty-five, two ninety-eight, zero, zero, one. Approving the Navah Nation District Raising Committee. He identified as the eighteenth Raising Committee. For the Navah Nation and the three branches of the Navah Nation government.
Okay, Madam Secretary, uh, moving on over to. This thing here, so the resolution is presented to you guys today via the projector here, it's also being shared online. Um, comments, questions, actually, before we do that. Motion. Willis and Rita. Okay, with that motion, and a second was done. Comments, questions regarding the resolution, this was sponsored by Roland.
What?
Okay, comments, question, okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand up high. You have a high. What do you think? Alex, how you vote?
In favor.
Nine. Okay. Abstain, or oppose? And abstain. Two. Okay.
So, what?
Resolution NOST, number two-five, two-two-five-nine-two-nine-eight, that's zero, zero, one, passing with nine in favor, zero opposed, and two abstain. Okay, moving back over to reports, government leadership reports. This is gonna be quick enough.
Yeah, that's the way we like it.
There we go. Uh, Dr. Boone Iger. Dr. Boone Iger.
You don't have it.
Boone Iger.
Can we?
Peacock.
That way this.
Okay. This is. Honorable man, Vice President, Rashomon Foya. Second call, third call. Arnold Stilley, Speaker, Navah Nation Council. First call, second call, third call. Alvo Hernaniels.
Sure, he should be able to be here.
First call. Second call. Third call. Day. Uh, Navajo County District One Supervisor, Fernanali. First call. Second call. Third call, moving on over to Copey County County District Supervisor, number four, Judy Gate. First call. Second call. Third call. Then we have, uh, LDA, Herman Daniels, Robert Black.
He's not here, we just have our secretary.
He is in court.
Well. Hey, you have ten minutes.
Yeah, chair, um, but. I share. Along with, uh, you. Very. About the votes. Very common. Role. Yeah. Please. Hey, uh, Mr. Daniels, could be hearing a minute, but, um. Put back on. Uh, given time and get here, but I'll go real quickly. Uh, probably with, same then. Uh, primarily, the, the activities are the items that I'm reporting on. Today are coming off of the, uh, the council session, that just explained much. Had a big extension. Um. Number one thing that, um, that wasn't on the agenda, that's what, that currently still. Going on with, um, the FY twenty twenty-six budget. The one, or infections that were line item vetoed. For, um, by the president for the legislative and judicial branch. So, CS dash four-four dash two-five. The legislation or the, the law that was passed, eh? Um. The, the two, the two branches, um, were line item vetoed. Out of the Kato, they did an amendment. To the, that legislation. And there, eh, the legislature, uh, judicial branch got their budget approved. But, um, the legislative bench, the ones that are line item retuned from the previous, um, line item retune, the G eight. Um, uh, only starting one to approve, and then. For the most part, partial. Um. Allocation were, um. Were, were allowed, I guess, to, to some extent, meaning that, um. President did a dash, 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 dash line, meaning that. Some certain amount was going to be used, so in the case of, um. The, the legislation can't fit of the budget. It only was extended for one month. Or, I don't think the nation, um. I mean, the delegates, um. But if you've got certain sections, only got an additional amount, but for most part, for the volume, for almost all of it, still. Um, line item making. Uh, Becky Daniels, um, had legislation on the session for, um. Could it be tours? An organization that's right outside of page. Um, legislation during little nine for aid to construct turning lanes. Um. Uh, to enter the site, or also coming out on the site. Maybe, um, based by your kid, on the. Asked for, um, the amount which was, um, tabled, and required additional reporting to be done, and maybe there are other potentials. Sources that could be tapped in to, instead of just the negative fee. And we, uh, yeah, you would be, so. Uh, now, another legislation, zero-two-two-seven-dash-two-five. A council delegates virtual attendance for, um, Navah Nation Council committee meetings. Um, so. The committee meeting could be intended virtually now. Uh, but not the general sessions or the, the, the main meetings, like the NABE. Um, I mean, the special meetings, and then the, uh, general catching. Yeah. Yeah. So. I don't know, for legislation, I want to say dash-two-five, which is, is dealing with veterans organizations. Uh, this resolution or legislation, eh, is allowed establishing agency veteran organizations. And chapters, veteran organizations. So, it is a pass of that. Uh, don't know the legislation, zero-one-seven-seven-two-five, it's the confirmation of, uh. Now with the vision of transportation, executive director. Uh, Tom Patero, eh, he got confirmed. Although legislation, zero-two-one-five-dash-two-five, Navah Nation Attorney General confirmation, um, Colin Bradley. That legislation failed. Uh, the legislation, one, zero-one-seven-two-dash-two-five. It was a legislation that was presented by Harvard Mitchell. To allocate ten million from the UUFP to work on matching monies for a road. That is also under, um, the, their own department of transportation. They intend them to, okay, they, they, they got what they're understanding that. Um, it needed fishmeal work, and then they'll get, um, American. Eh, eh, she made a recommendation that whatever is coming back, eh, it should be, um, available to almost all of the chapters that are seeking additional allocation. Which I think, um, was kind of good for us in our area, because of the situation with the rules at N sixteen, and I became, so I'm thinking. Be ready for it, because, um, things can come down the same way as the senior citizens center fit. Aside, oh, you just send a, you have a reservation, and then to get out, but all that, which. So, they, I don't know, they think, yeah, so just be ready. That, um. We have our numbers and stuff of that, so that we have that fail to be included, so. The primary area for, um, Debbie Daniels. That we.
Okay. I need asking, so I don't know what he's gonna have. If. Question, we. Okay. Moving on, John Gray. OPVP, Vice Representative. Ten minutes.
Done.
Center. Nope. You have ten minutes.
Okay, um. My report this morning, or this afternoon, I, I just want to say thank you to all that's in attendance at this time. And again, yeah, it's Joan Gray, and she had. Torete cheating, and she's on tour, and I'm a boss, she's cheating, but I need to see, she does it, it's a plan, and that's a nally. Quit out in the essence, and I am one of your, um, eh, I'm the agency representative for the Northern Agency. Portion of Western Agency. Um, as far as, under the Navah Nation President, President and Vice President's office. Um, as one of your executive staff assistants. Uh, my duties and my outline duties for. For the agency representative is basically assisting a lot, providing a lot of direct services for our people. Here on Navaho, whether it be home site leases, disseminate, disseminating applications. Um, working directly with the local chap, chapter levels to see what type of discretionary funds families. Are entitled to, or can appro, uh, can apply for in regards to the needs, um, after an assessment. Um, I just make those recommendations to the chapter houses, and if the chapter can't help. I usually try to reach directly out to the division directors to see what kind of assistance these individual families can do. Um, or can get, excuse me. So far, um, I've been working very collaboratively with majority of the chapters. Um, that need assistance with constituents or constituents that, um, come directly. To me, or reach out directly to me with assistance with anywhere from. Uh, well, I guess more so been working a lot on the home site lease process. Uh, my focus a lot has been right here in Nostis On as well, eh, well. Uh, now, um, inscription house, working with the contractors there. We're still working on the twenty-two, um, homes that need to be, um. Receive, excuse me, receive the light up Navaho, um, getting ready for the, some of the families still haven't received. Their complete applications with home site leases, along with their. Um, uh, some documents that need to be turned in with the affidavit, is what I was trying to say, the affidavit with NTUA as far as. Um, the rewiring and the wire, uh, rewiring and the wiring process. Um, and we've also, the, um, assist in delivering one or two homes in the, eh, in the Preston Mesa area. Uh, where roads needed to be cleared, and you know, just. You know, finally, um, giving directions as well as working one-on-one with more so Sarah Slim under the. Navaho Hopi Land Commission. To ensure that these families receive their homes, um, I am working directly with. One or two families out in that area as far as, um, their. For them to receive their homes, I'm sorry, I'm somewhat, I'm out stationed, I'm assisting at this time over at the Navaho, yes, I was going according to the agenda at nine o'clock. And, um, it's, eh, I, I don't, I didn't see the time change or updated time change to ten o'clock, so I had worked around that timeframe. Um, for my availability. Um, but more so, more importantly, it's just a lot of direct services with families. Um, and I, I think that's basically it, and trying to attend a lot of the. Events that are being hosted here across Navaho and the Western Navaho Agency area, representing. Um, our department, our Dine people, as well as Office of the President, so I'm. Making myself available as much as possible to the constituents and, um, just on the move all the time, so. That basically concludes my, um, report. As far as what I, what my duties and responsibilities are as far as, um, executive staff assistants, it's just basically the. Providing direct services for our people here on, in the Western Agency, um, northern part of it. So, that's basically it at this time, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. Um, again, I am assisting over at Nostis On High School with the Navaho Yes Ultra event this morning.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Gray, question, comments from the council. Hey. I need you to work harder on getting us the topic in things, so.
I need you to work harder on getting us to stop picking things, so um if you read my email last night. We really appreciate that, so.
Um, thank you.
Comment I have.
Um, thank you, Dillard, for that, I am, you know, I'm doing the best that I can to advocate on your behalf as well as our. Dennis um here in. The um. Welcome. Now that we have a staff and deputy chief of staff, I am hoping that. In um I I am going to, actually, I should say, I'm going to go ahead and revisit these conversations. With the chief of staff and deputy as well as a division director. Um you know, and my my thought is at this point is I I don't know. Um I know that these fundings for the um senior centers are not coming directly to the chapters. I don't know um if the delegates are going to be dropping legislations for their respective areas. To make that request, um I I really don't know, but on my end, um I will go ahead and continue to do that. Advocate on what um you're requesting for, Dillard, yeah.
Thank you.
Run this way, it's this way, go this way, I I'm sorry, go ahead.
Louis. Of course, we had that, we had that meeting, uh I was asking for nothing. On uh on all the projects that we discussed. Some other uh things that we discussed that.
Um I know, yeah, um Shana Tony, Mr. Willis. Um from O Ojetto and I know back back in I um. I want to say the end of August or the midway of September, we did have another meeting with. Um Council Delegate Herman and yourself and um others that might have been in attendance in regards to your requests. With the meeting that had transpired in April um prior to my um appointment, however. Uh again, you know, I am continuing to advocate on my end for the chapter, the respective chapters that I am working with. And you know, I can continue to do follow-ups and follow-ups on that. Um again, just like I had mentioned to Dillard, I'll go ahead and again, sit down with the chief of, the new chief of staff. As well as the deputy that's coming in to revisit some of these and then again, also reminding. Uh to the division directors that these are priorities. That have been identified during the chapter visits and the chapters are waiting. As well, so I'll go ahead and continue to um. Provide those updates as they become available to me.
Thank you very much for that, Joe. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you for the report, moving on to the National Channel Chapter President. Not the son chapter president. I want to provide you a report. Jay. Willie. Do you want to do your report?
What four minutes do I go by?
You have ten minutes, so that's.
What format do I go by?
Just go by. There's the things that you've done for your community. So big the council.
Thank you. Lance Stein. And uh. I don't remember how it. Anyway, I don't, the members of the council. I have been absent. For the last uh since August. Um seventeen. September, October. Um so. From the area, I'm not too sure as to what is uh. Taking place, but. And two official has continued to function. Uh as a uh. Uh at the chapter meetings. Um or. A well uh taken care of. By the spread of all the other projects that I've been working on. One of them is, as mentioned, on previous report. Navajo Man Ochito wrote. I was working with the two. Um professional. Engineer. One of them is uh. The state of Utah assigned the uh. Uh natural. Uh. Certain. Uh professional engineers. To work with the. Uh natural resource conservation service. Of course, uh to understand it, years ago, the uh state of Arizona. Uh USDA. Transfer all of the Navajo reservation. State of Utah and New Mexico. Transfer that under the Arizona USDA. It is still. Uh overseen by that individual. So natural uh natural resource conservation service is under USDA. The uh, there is a memorandum of agreement and I G A. Uh is between the United States, USDA and the Navajo Nation. So there were some uh. Question as to how the. These connection would be, so that's since uh I tried to uh. Uh push for. Possible, we do have forty funds, we do have Chin Lee office. Um and that's it, the one that was. A kid that toes down several years ago. Uh we tried to reopen it, but the thing is uh no. Spaces available to rent. Uh anyway, that that's what I was working on, right now, there's a dead. Uh engineer that's assigned to work with the uh Navajo. Nation and the state of Utah water rights. And these engineers are assigned by the state of Utah, who work with the local chapters. To design. How this. Design a water distribution system. And. Right now, the. The other obstacle that we face is uh. President Trump has frozen all. Of the monies that supposed to be coming down the tube. Under the state of uh or the. Water settlement agreement between the Navajo Nation and um. State of Utah, but that had. Eight million dollars was committed by the state of Utah, that is. That's what we're using now to fill these gaps and continue to work with the. The bodies uh in this fashion, so there's a lot of. Uh work that needs to be done. In order to uh get these uh projects going. The other thing that is uh still. Waiting for is the. I have draft a resolution. Or possibly oppose resolution that was passed by the chapter. Four million dollars. To be allocated for environmental impact study. For the uh Ocheto Navamang. I have not heard anything, maybe uh. Mister Flight can look into that. Now I still should say. Aiden. Have been the detail, so maybe the. Um Mister Patero can uh. Was the uh. Naval Committee or the Navajo Nation Council to. And come all of the dollars. From different sources here, we've been paid. Um fuel exhausts. I have no idea what the balance are. Her agency. And there's a uh several questions that that I have. Uh the other project that we're working on is the uh. As as mentioned or discussion. Um chapter. Community boundary. Originally, according to what I've. Heard. In my early years. Attending. Different gatherings. Over the years. Chapter meetings, uh community gathering, those are information that I get, and I've written up a. Two or three pages of it. And uh. Based on that, um. We'll probably have a. Uh expected and needed discussion sometime down the road, so. So I'm sure to bring your fire, I swear. Next, they were still. What they had done there. But then really interesting. The other uh. Project is the uh. The power line extension. The water line in Payo Mesa. Is being. Uh draft. Right now by engineer. Design plan is being made. Power line extension to Payo Mesa is another. Uh project that we need to uh. Continue to push. Into U A and so forth. Based on that, um. I don't know, the Navajo Nation. Into U A seems to be. Mountain. Chapter. Or funds. That are allocated to the chapters. And there. Um project, water projects, power line projects, we have to dish out. Thousands of dollars in order to match those uh outside funding sources. Uh I don't, I don't think that's. Where the money is going to. Uh people pay for utilities to interview it. Only what? Ten percent or less is being disshopped, you know, assists. And that hasn't changed for at least. Forty years. Still at the same rate, thank you.
Thank you, Chanel. Questions? And over this water line project to higher Mesa, this urgent. This urgent that is losing all. Uh. Basically, she gets the key. But all starts on that, we're right, hello, Dicky Daniels, so um. Mister Phil Cooley. Hey, uh, shout for that, though, knowing what to, for now, for boost, it's a three-phase power line that we need. So that that won't get power, and they continue all the way down to this. So. If I do, I'm the construct, uh, fashion engineering, uh. Survey that, yeah, the only construction ready. The person know. None uh, the other thing, uh, Navajo nationwide. Yeah, water lines and power lines, they ride away here. If you calculate that whole area of the ride when we did. Thus the if. Uh of it. Like this uh. Fibrotics, you know, in. Uh the reason the highway right away, that is probably utility corridor. But um but all I'm getting to is um, it's weird with the. Power line does, they give the. They route it like as a crow flies underneath the shores. And they have no respect for anything that's in between there. So this right away, if. If you calculate it uh. It is probably. You know, it's a machine, it probably subtracted from Navajo Nation. Like high highways, the right away, all. And um always right away, that that's going to eat you away. And but once it's up and it it's it's okay for breathing, but we still have the right one. And so, uh, into U A, it's a company out of Texas. So. Being too easy to ride away, if they don't ask for. Like she has to down that to them to go out and um. Get the set like for any usual project and land across, so maybe. So what they do now is they contact us, although we give them names, they present to make that. to your they although they take care of their consent forms, any other projects that's already we assign them. So somewhere along the way, that change. I noticed the latest one, the latest resolution was passed at at the Agency Council. I think if you're speaking to that, what we want to do, that resolution, it was in the give it back to leave the local chapter. I don't think that'll so right now, it doesn't respect your Pepsi. These are power lines and that, you know, interior, what they're doing. So if you I don't know how they're written, they should be written something on your utility side, maybe a whole section of the buildings. Talking about how you want that. Power line route. I don't know, because Shantel, Shantel, if I would have been we want this power line buried underground, I believe, near same as single. But I'm sure I've tried before. Is it really Pepsi? My dad. They can click them, so can't really stay. So I think it's Chanel. You're first, let's see. Yeah, I did. I think those those type of information should be included in there. And the other one is on the gene that they're very early, you know. So there was a whole different discussion. So everybody, Chanel.
Well, there Chair. E.T. I know Monver Valley has the is recognized as the national Navajo Nation, National Navajo Nation Park area. And we did the same thing. We wanted the cable power line and water line and whatever goes in the area to be buried. And he says, you have to establish your whole community as a national park, as a park in order to be streamlined. The only thing that was legitimate to me, as I heard that was that it is a lot higher cost to bury the cable or of such rather than over over hit. Idea.
Thank you for your report. Moving on over to Jito. What's
Good morning. Hello, I'm Tereya, so maybe though. Oh. So here you are. The chapter J2, we have the power line that about this last week. Two weeks is late. Get it finished on the virtual view, not only no camera. Although you can't for company out of Texas. The volunteer, I said, it's a very nice tubes. For I don't know what you want. Phase two are they don't have their passion started yet, but they're they're still stuck. Although one of them, but you know, you know, we had a meeting with H R H in a big area of a scum ball of that the question sort of one line project of I don't mind, they never came, you know, you know. But here, I think that I know that there's a there's already we have there. It's lost in the government. So first, they said, oh, that area, you it's just things, you know. I don't get four years, you know, one of them. You know, that's in the works. So but then, I thought, let's press a five years, I think. What's going on? One line. It was like, I don't know, back to call it. So you know, that's then in six homes, I shouldn't. I know we had big lists, but I don't know, didn't fight you. And I still question all of that. But I'm going to go on trying to offer homes, so there was a it comes every four days, you know. We don't know, and I don't know, it's just on the road, so we just don't have time to do that. I don't think I'm part of that. But I should have pushed it, but I don't know. So it all of the thing, you know, it's a I could, I guess, I don't know. Okay, cool, but you got to we're trying to actually, I so that we're home, that we should actually they don't want to, you know, I don't mess with your money. It's not called by, so that's it was, I don't know, the chapter has, so you know, you know, that's about the again, I don't know, I'm glad you yeah, so you you talk and said next to me, but he so we had a meeting. I know. They just insert the publication. Yeah, I think the answer, they, you know, was they only created so that was, because you know, last time, yes, 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 it's been helped us, you know, just eight more, they should in the middle of our house, so and they so every community certainly because of this, so it's not not, not with the so okay. Just as they want, this is totally interesting, I don't know what you guys think. It's all of us, like the power line Texas staff who has the volunteer commitment, volunteer guy. We, when I can pay for this, the volunteer, they make that, yeah. So they did the volunteer if power line, they just I don't know, um, that and I didn't know, it's a then the whole stack of we saw, we did that. So you don't got four after I don't some chapters, yeah, I don't know, so I they they taught I knew I don't know. Um, that you know, I shouldn't, I don't want to, this they of course, of course, I don't bet, so or should I they're not partners in the so and then able like this power line a long trailer, oh, yeah, here, I don't get four months, right? And I don't know, that's this never the money, especially I live there, so I live there, so I don't have to but there was because yeah, I in now I don't know, I don't I don't know, I don't so you will someone this case of even the I don't know. I can't do that, I don't know. They don't know. You can't reach out, can't someone can't they so don't die there. Now, when they should do it, someone can don't don't someone can't that's what I can't know. So that's I don't know. What I just so I think that and that BIA Jen, I'm the host, we we that or not I don't I don't he's can you they couldn't I don't know. This is Chanel, I don't know. You can't but I think I'm so I just that's even personally, probably not. Yeah.
Yeah. Questions? I said, fair, you.
I know that it's hit home and been reaching out to me and to the Ocheteau administration. And they're really adamant, saying that your through the roads for those we have in town. But they say, they're telling me that they're having a hard time getting in contact with the administration. So what is the solution?
Well, there there it was. Because I went to the homes. I was invited to go attend, but go go on for the people, yeah. In your points, points. I don't, they asked me that, I believe, they both they don't touch on it. They just have some they don't touch on it, but only I mean, from it's on them. Even in that, I don't they're down.
I
I don't know, that's we don't have any permit, that's what we told so that's why we don't the place not running, we don't have an they know that. Now, that we can have meetings with them and then I know your sister's giving a home and I know that their places are already probably text and everything, but to go back, it was all the way down to I have a that's why I asked them to try and get a hold of that or the charge. Now, now
Okay, moving on. Shantel. Your president. Ten minutes.
Well, when that good morning, everyone. Strategic session is probably the first thing that we did a few months ago in this quarter. And it was held at NDOT in Sabanito. Session together by my brother, Robert, and our A.D. Benali. And that went really well. So that was a pretty good session, basically as a 101 for our new commission and also our incoming AFOG members overall. Then we also worked on some other AFOG related stuff. So Shantel is an LGA certified chapter with AFOG certification, which is an alternative form of government. So what our setup is a little bit different than just a regular LGA certified chapter. So we do have our own ordinance that pertains to the way that we govern ourselves. So a lot of that was updates for the sitting officials and members of the council. And then we are also working on several business site leases, especially the the businesses that are already at Shantel. I'm getting them compliant, getting them up to date and creating some of those rental fees that will go along with it. And recently, P and Z had a strategic session focusing on projects. We did put them up to date. We do have a a number of items that are listed. One of those is finding a city planner to start. I shouldn't say city. I say, I'll say master plan put together for our Pepsi members. And then we are looking for funding for a business management office and business manager. So that's something that's sitting on the shelf right now. Well, I shouldn't say shelf. We are working on it, but there are some documents that we are pulling together due to the land status. It was withdrawn some time ago and the information that we're seeking is fitting with the archives in one of the three locations. So we got to find it somehow after the government's shutdown. So it's probably going to be pro bono work for somebody. Mainly me. So that's that's a project that I'll be looking at. And then we are also we hired a temporary worker last week to prepare our FMS for review by Department of Justice. Last week, I also connected with NGO to look at our stream, rewrite a legislation project with with them as a pilot project. So that's something that is coming along and I hope that they're able to partner with ASU. So we'll see how that goes. If it's successful, then we can probably look at other areas to do the same thing. We've been to several RDC meetings. Can't really talk much about that, but a fence will be coming up for our, a permanent fence will be going around our property or Shantel Hotel sometime in the next two months. And there are water line extensions in the works. The bathroom project for Shantel was completed, I believe, at the beginning of, at the the spring. So and they are looking at a couple more areas to maybe do some more additions. And we are also working with Western Solutions to secure an HTO truck, a water truck for the Shantel area. And that's also a project, I believe, that Western Agency Council passed a resolution. Thank you for that. And we're waiting for a truck from Water Resources as a Navajo Nation to sign over a truck to Shantel. That also means extending our I guess, our insurance coverage the same with the hotels. So there's a lot. There's a lot that goes into coverage. The more you have, the more insurance you pay. So that's something that is going to be, you know, if you're planning an economic development project, keep that in mind. The other portion is that we're also working with NHA to get back some of the land that they have withdrawn over the years. And I believe it's a under bucket list of things to do as it was, I guess, told to them by RDC to start giving back some of the land that has been withdrawn over the years by by NHA. So Shantel's looking at getting back 15 acres right now because of the government shutdown. The BIA is not responding. I guess maybe until after shutdown. So if you have any win under NHA or a Navajo Nation land that you think might do well under your jurisdiction, actually, like here. That would only apply to Shantel, sorry. Rest of you, I'm sorry. So anyway, so that's where we're at. That's our, that's our report.
Thank you. Comments, questions? All right. Thank you.
May I do 10 minutes?
All right. So it's over at Tapi Kinni here. We went ahead and we had our our chapter meeting last two weeks ago. It was pretty good turnout. We were able to pass a lot of good resolutions. We also are starting a process to withdraw land for family plots. As the president of Tapi Kinni gave the community or constituents a deadline that by the end of this year, they have to go ahead and get all of their family plots withdrawn by the end of this year, or at least submitted. Because if they're not going to do that, then I'm going to go ahead and withdraw all of the family plots. We have 63 plots throughout the entire community of Tapi Kinni. With all those 63 plots, we're going to go ahead and withdraw them and put them under the jurisdiction of the chapter because according to RDC, that's what it has enlisted as if any of the family plots are not withdrawn as a family, then it falls underneath the chapter. So that's what we're going to do. I gave everybody a deadline by the end of this year. You know, and that's one thing we need to do because us as a community, we need to have these deadlines. And if we're not going to be able to meet these deadlines, you know, we're going to sit here stagnant and whatnot. And so I've already been getting approached by many of my constituents who are saying that, well, can you extend it a whole another year? But then again, it comes back down to if you extend it a whole another year, then someone else is going to drop the ball and then it's just going to drag out. So Shay, as a, as the president, I told everybody that we're not going to do this, we're going to get this thing done and we're going to go ahead and get it all. So all community plots will be, go ahead and follow our policy and procedure regarding our chapter policy. With that, we're working on getting two, three more labors to assist us with helping maintaining our plots. Our rule addressing, we are again 100% complete on that. We did get our signages. And we are working on getting those signages posted up and put in place. As you guys look at the Google Maps, a lot of our community has already been bought it. And so we've been able to Uh we've been able to um utilize the. The rule dressing there um. We are ninety some percent complete with our warehouse project. So hopefully we be we will have somebody. Will be able to at least spread ground or. Open the warehouse by hopefully by November. Uh at the end of November, we had a shortfall. To the warehouse and we're. We're working on how to uh to get additional funding for that. So if you guys don't have any other ARPA funds that you guys are not going to use, hey, by all means, give the Tapi Kinnan chapter, but we we. We'll go ahead and utilize it and get it special for you guys, so. Um. So we need fifty-three thousand dollars because the warehouse is built at a four hundred amp um. Building where we're going to be able to house at these two lift stations and also welding machine. And all that good stuff out there because we have a lot of other projects that we want to go ahead and utilize down the down road. So we're working on getting those and so pretty soon, I think man. Shana will be getting a resolution here pretty soon to then. Uh drop to transfer some of the C H S and funds to cover some of those costs on the projects that we've already completed. So um we have completed our electrical portion. We've also completed uh some of the bathroom additions, I believe. And then we have fully withdrawn um. Yeah, we have. Withdrawn the crossroads area. We've also withdrawn the. The Navo and A dot location. We're also working with the Coconia County to put in these speed uh radars. That everybody has been talking about this. The Sedona community has received that, so we'll look in with Coconia County to see if you can get that. Next chapter meeting, we're going to be sponsoring a res- a resolution to support the new legislation two, four, five dash two, five. Um which is the mutual agree mutual aid agreement between Coconia County. We're going to go ahead and sponsor that. Um so hopefully get that underway. As you know, in the past year, we've had three incidents where we had FBI agents and all that stuff coming around and we kind of. We don't really know what's going on in that community, so. Don't really know who's running around in our community and whatnot until after the fact. And so with that, it kind of causes a lot of political, not political, but. Public scare and whatnot and certain routine. And so in order to minimize some of those things, I think, you know, I've I've been in contact with our county sheriff. Uh Alex. Now. Oh, man, I forgot your last name. Uh the Coconia County Sheriff um working on with him to. Help at least get some presence along the eighty-nine route and then also we're working with Keenatta District to also provide some assistance with um visual. Um as of last month, I believe the the Keenatta District has stated that they're they had put more off through in the northern region. Yes, they had a little task force to at least have a little bit more presence. We had um. Possible somewhat abduction throughout um. Uh a person who is notifying people that there's people running around in advance and. Possibly abductors, and so that's what caused us to go ahead and get in touch with on Navo Nation and also Navo D P S. Um the other thing we got across was we're also working on redeveloping that area. Uh we're making sure that we can possibly get a new senior center. Hospital down that way or. Uh maybe an e-commerce, a commerce center down there at the crossroads area. So we're going to repurpose that instead of making that public safer building, we're going to repurpose that into a commerce center. See here. We did request for a downdraw for our substitution, not substitution, our transfer station for the community. We're working on the plans and designing phases for those to get the transfer station in in place. Um we're also working on applying for a couple of grants to help sustain us with that. Illegal dumping. We have worked with an in Navo Nation uh D P A. Um to get some assistance on how we can establish a. And your transfer station and then possibly doing an incinerator here, you know. Provide us our own power in our whole community. So then now then hopefully in the next five, ten years, you'll see it's a big kid public works vehicle running around out there. And our public utility because we don't need to worry about M T O A anymore. We can do our own. Uh still working on the senior center right now. Um again, I did an email last night, a couple of my frustrations to the apartment, so hopefully. Tonight you can actually push that forward to get that resolved because, you know, that's it's been a year since. It's been a year since nomination council had passed that resolution. To appropriate funding for all of a hundred for all of the senior centers. And no action has been done in the Tapi Kinnon region. Because we're still waiting on somebody up there in Winter Rock to actually get something in place or planted in places, so. Um. Like I've stated before, is if you're not going to be in, if you're going to be in the way, at least just give us the funding so we can do it ourselves. Since we are a certified chapter. Other than that, uh. See here. We are almost, we pretty much fully expended a lot of our ARPA projects. We've um we're one of the chapters. We're working on getting that one at least I read it uh hopefully in the next couple of months. See here. Oh, and we're also working on the now we're at sixteen route, so. We've had multiple meetings with now we're out sixteen and the tunneling and Tapi Kinn residents. Um we're working with uh trying to get the T T the T T I P get on that program so we can get the road paved. Uh all the way. Apparently, right now, it looks like rough twenty-one and in sixteen are going to be in competition in that, and so. I would seek for maybe some approval, some assistance from the C H S and funds to at least help build and pave that road. Um. It's going to cost four million dollars per mile. To put in that new road uh thirteen. Fifteen miles. Sixteen miles. So it's going to be roughly around sixty seventy million dollars for the entire round. If you're calculating it four million dollars per mile. So. I'm pretty sure that the system of a nation is a billionaire. I'm pretty sure they have some fundings to go ahead and throw that in there. Because the one thing is if we can, as a Navo Nation, we can actually. If we pay that out of our own pocket, we have the ability to say, hey. We'll put a toll on that road and then that funds the code come back to the nation. Um all that good stuff. So other than that. I think that's pretty much it.
Is that private funding?
If we do it out of C H S, then that would be not nation funding, so yes. Private funding now with it. So. All right, that's my report. Questions? Okay. Our Marvin Daniels. Yeah, your floor, ten minutes to port. Yeah. Thank you for your support. All the way. He was one of the the poppers. Hey, but that's a cool so now. I see the. I don't know. So it is. District Assistant. When the way man die down. Our session started. Wednesday. So the. Non-sport issue. State of the nation interest. A. He are. Temporary restraining order. You know, that that speaker is. Speaker Dan. Even now. The way the. The coffee I I voted favor. I think it could have reported. But I don't mean delegate. For that. That that state of the nation that just failed. That's a she I voted favor choice that's I given. I I voted favor. What that's what that was speaker. It's kind of legislation. A consent agenda. Legislation decreasing consent agenda. Coco, one of one of my legislation was. On the on the consent agenda. Navo Government Development Commission. Western Agency though represents. The snow. It went before. Are in the council. A consent agenda. I don't know, but the red. The red. Navo Government Development. I don't care. Legislation zero, zero, nine, four. Twenty-five. Kind of day tours. In a way that page. Company tour company. Into us. A joke of nature. Four hundred and um. Oh, yeah, it was four hundred, four hundred thousand by five inch kid. Not for some. Four hundred eight thousand. A couple. So there's other fundings that you can use. Division Economic Development. And on that in a way, Navo Nation Parks Recreation. Five care funds. He are just basically. Never will travel party. Okay, Monument Valley too, but that. And the way that I know. How they pay their interest fees. I was saying with that, Antelope Canyon. So there's uh seven tribal parks. Rather than Navo Nation. The busiest tribal park is Antelope Canyon. It used to be Monument Valley, that Antelope Canyon. It's the the busiest tribal park on the nation. Oh, that oh, that that has. They're just taking the withdrawal. Eight table. So either that's a. I don't know. Virtual attendance. Virtual attendance. A delegate. Coco, A. Look at base. F Y twenty twenty-six. This will be this. Can get legislative branch. I don't know. Or you need that line. We've got salary. I don't know. There are two, two. Two, two meetings. Cause eh, it's on the plan. You get up there as long as you can travel. So even now virtual. Attendance, virtual meetings. Chapter officials, they they get their stipends. They get their stipends. Well, but that legislation passed a nineteen favors through nineteen favor for post. Was that been each of okay opposing. Oh, yeah, I think so. I don't know. Wait. I yeah. Legislation. Zero, one seventy-four, one seventy-two. A. Urban Mitchell. Delegate Urban Mitchell. Five chapters. A better, okay, though. Ten million, okay. Even that not so the. My. In ninety four zero two. Road improvement. Ten million. Papa. I call. Delegate. You come up with that. A comprehensive plan. Road plan. What I. I voted favor. So. I. Urban Mitchell. That table. So. And. Senior Centers. Oh, remember. From the floor. A hundred forty eight million. They. You don't form four point one million. So that's. We have roads. I see that needs attention. One of the roads. About my brother. Are you canyon road? So. In sixteen. I see. I knew. Child. There's, there's roads. So. Eddie. Monday. Monday. Um. A, it's mainly for two chapters. A. Update. Miss Black Horse. Linda Black Horse. She don't know. I get them. Because. It's gonna be forty five. At four. When the top. They. And. This is. That's like a call in or zoom. I don't know. You wanna. Create it together. Two. And. I think. Wouldn't. Wouldn't. I don't. Yes. The other day I ran into Miss Daisy. Human Daisy. Hey, where? That was who division transportation. Deputy Division. Deputy Division. Shelby Daisy. A. Shantel. On the. On the. Roads and also. Maybe. So. It is. County roads. San Juan County. You know. I. When. I'm. Firm. Out of an idea. Delegate. Thirty thirty minutes, thirty seconds. He said. He. San Juan County Road. I see. I was in the case. That's a bus. As an egg. Down the. I call. What. Of course. It's gonna start a meeting with that. San Juan County. I don't. My brother. We are. Spend. A year. Hundred forty eight million. He could have been last year. For senior centers across the nation. They're that. To the state. Oh, it. Even if it is. A hundred forty eight million. Four point one million. I don't two hundred thousand. So. Based on. We. I don't know. I don't know. I don't. So amendment. Then hundred forty eight million. Is he there? The. additional funds. Plans. He's here. Trump. So. Wait. So. I don't. It is. It's. Later Kerry Smallkin. Small Kane. Take about two terms. He has. In two terms. He has. I recognize. China. I see. I don't want to. So. I. See. Shang. Sit. Shang. Even. So. Or. I don't. Written reports. Not. We think. Thank you.
The. This rules. I mean. My. Way around to each chapter. And we voice our all our concern. At your meeting, is there anything brought up? Of. What is prioritizing? For each chapter? And I know, but oh, or was it just to? Make us think that? They're listening to us. Then at the meeting up there. Was that brought up? About. Did they do it prioritizing on things or? Just to make us think that? They're working with us.
Every year. Legislative priorities. Legislative priorities. Because Arizona. Arizona delegates. You can legislate. Yeah. I don't New Mexico. Now. Is he. Our priorities. And not. Our priorities. My brother. Our priorities. And that is. Priorities. I don't know. An egg. So. I see. More size. Like. I don't know. Executive branch. Legislative branch. Executive branch. And. Because. Hey, man, I'm just. I'm just neutral. Coco. Budget. He. But you know, we present. Executive branch. That's why. He. I don't know. He had the line. So. Retaliation. So. The way that. President. Administrative leave. You do. Chapter. Enter. Chapter. They. He. This event. Which is. But it's. So you guys are okay down here. But. Why you see? I think she gave a resolution. They. For the operation. It's. Of course. It is. Executive branch. So. They are just neutral. Neutral. It's. But. Thank you. Know which. Are concerned. This is. You may. Certainly. Next. Whether you. But. Once. In the. Minutes. Although. So. Last thing. President. Who gives. Stop. I don't know. But we. Oh, quite. In back. You. They already. Going. The. Uh. So. If you. If you. If. President. Somebody. It will be. Other. He's all the. Of. Person. Shouldn't. Other. I don't. Express. Concern for that. You think. Direct. Thought. You. Children. But. It's. Annoying. But we. Help. It's. Ancient. Won't be. Especially president. Or. Or. Of the. Assistant. See. Everything like that. We thought that who will work on it. I hope. It gives. What. Directly. In. They have started funding chambers. They. We told. Some. You first. With the president. I tell you. Division. I don't. The beer. So we would have. Started talking to the system. And the president. But also. For your information. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Now. I mean. I. I'm sorry. I don't know. President. She. Coco. I'm see. I don't. We. President. You know. I don't. There is. I also. Get it through the council. On the. So. I see. Because. You. That. Or. That is. It's. But. Thank you. Any. And. Yeah. Yeah. I like. I live. It is. I think. We did. Pretty well in terms of. It is the. Land acquisition for the. You can have a whole house. Senate. Ben. We as a chapter official. Were upon ourselves to. Get those things going. Then later on. When it was completed. Ever. The company. Supposedly. There. You can have a whole houses. It's supposed to be doing all of that work. But you guys. Complete. So. I see. Yeah. I. Okay. Chapter official. I don't. Your report. Better express my. Consideration and concern. On your. Your behalf of. Using your. Loved one. I mean. I don't. It was. The only. She. My. Right. I don't. I. Is. At. But. They. As. Yeah. What I. Done. That's how. Not supposed to be spread. Especially. As you. Never. And. I do. As. The. I do. It's. Not. He.
It's past a resolution. That indicates something is gonna be happening. Um, and then the rest is continued in the con funds. So that will be my response to that.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, moving on. Rule addressing project update and discussion. So let's try to make this a really good discussion. I don't want to take too long for it, but. All right, make it when you're just, can we ask questions or we do reports? Paying to the point. Okay. So. But for the rule addressing property update and especially for what we're gonna talk about, I guess, we had several concerns regarding um. Uh, the rule addressing, so. In some people can see, we have our own. We have completed a lot of ours for rule addressing in our area. As you can see. On the map. So that here. That's good. So I guess the discussion I wanted to have is just pretty much come up to you guys is that, you know, we're going through the uh, the rest portion. Uh, the, the company SBR that was contracted to do a lot of the work here, I'm pretty sure they're already in their community and whatnot. Uh, doing their role addressing portion. Again, there is, there is two projects apparently, I understand, one is Navajo Nation, which is held and spearheaded by MC Baldwin. We have to, and he's using that system. Utilizing the sort of being an older version of, you know, rule addressing. He's going out to all the community members, asking for their names, birthdays, all that stuff, who lives here, how many people live here in this area? And, you know, back then, you have to remember, we had landlines to all of our phones, so we had landlines to all, all, everybody was had landline. And so with that, though, that's probably the reason why he was asking for all these questions, but now that we're in the twenty first century. You know, we all have cell phones, everyone in here. You know, we're able to get on our face, on our Facebook, you know, we're in a meeting. And look, and um, but on that thing, you have a GPS in that, on that phone. And so. When you call nine one one now. That nine one one call goes to the nearest P S A, the Department Safety Call Center. And it gets your approximate GPS coordinates. And those dispatchers over there should have the ability to review that, and so. And that's what Indian nine one one right now is doing. Who has gathered all the information, the addressable structures and whatnot. And we don't really need to have crews in this area because, you know, you gotta remember. Everybody has a cellphone and we have the ability to get the GPS coordinates off those phones. So with being that. They're doing the ruler dressing portion, making sure that we have air street names for all of the, the roads that have at least five, four or five people along that road. And so with that, if people are living along this road and in the BIA system, it doesn't have their own BIA number, like Route sixteen or sixty four, sixty three ten, right? If it, if it's not in login, the BIA system, then it's not gonna have a road number. So us as the chapter, us as leaders of our community. Now, we kinda have to go ahead and start getting those a process in place. So us as, I think, here, we went ahead and said, then we're gonna go ahead and have our road names named T E K, as we see on the map. Any of these new locations that have a, like, a lot of people that live along those roads. Or routes. But it was not entered into the BIA system having its own road, like here, seventy three forty nine. That here is already. Um. That here already had a road name, and it's been logged into the BIA system again. So that's, and N dot takes care of all that stuff. When you're going through the rule address portion, that's the R team, they gather all the maps, all the um C H R maps, N dot maps, N T U A, all that stuff, and they condense it and they put it into one system, and then what you have. So some of the routes, like I stated, that don't have a a road number, we automatically gave them the chapter because apparently they're wanting to utilize the chapter within that service territory. Man. Or within that service territory area. So now it comes down to the question like down here where you have multiple locations. Like, as you guys can see, this is an inscription house, and as you guys know. Know it's probably gonna cause border war here, but this portion on here, they're utilizing the, the service territory. The service area territory, there's a mapping system that they have because DPS utilizes that. I can confirm that because when I used to work with Navajo Nation Police Department, we used to use the same map here. Again, this is the service story, or a map. We do understand that there's a grazing man, which is a totally different. And so. I guess we wanted to sort of bring it up to everybody to say, like, you know, this road right here, like, you guys can see here, T B K forty three twenty nine. This route here is gonna go into Chantel. But it already has a name here, saying T B K. And with some of the roads and some of the concerned individuals. Then our constituents again will probably say, hey, why am I going out over here to, I'm in Chantel, but I'm on, I'm off a T B K route? So I guess one thing I wanted to address to everybody is us as a NOS, as a NOS regional council, we have already established ourselves, recognize that we have four chapters, that we are regional council. In order to maintain neutrality or anything like that, I was proposing that we go ahead and change the T B K or any of the chapters within our area to a NOS road name. Again, so everybody's happy, so we don't have to say, oh, it's a Chantel, this is Navajo Mountain, this is Old Dato, I don't want Chantel's one in the Old Dato, or Old Dato's one in Navajo Mountain, or stuff like that, in order to maintain. In order to maintain um, the, the, the progression of getting these things done. I guess my, my, I wanted to open it up to everybody here. You know. There's any concern about that, or? When not. Willis.
I think uh. Maybe just put a letter for all that area, I'm not, just pulling from policy, like uh like for um Highway eighty nine, you know, all those uh numbers, I think that's three thirty, I mean, you could just drop it down to numbers. And then make a one there, one drop. You know, I mean, no. Yeah.
I think. Okay, I think it's because of the, you know how like you have to have the numbers, I think they're just gonna keep the same, the numbers are gonna keep the same, but I guess it's the the, the ownership or the showing of an ownership of the road, right? I guess there's gonna be some confusion later on down the line. Because uh, we, we had discussed it with Chantel, and we also had a meeting with Navajo Mountain um two days ago regarding this, we decided to break it here, it just opened it up to everybody. And so. Like I said, ownership portion appears, that's what the causing issue, you know, that road. You're like I was saying, if you have T B K going into Chantel, and that road continuing all the way into Chantel. You're gonna have constituents who are gonna be concerned about, why am I going on to a T B K road if I live in Chantel?
It's like, so, that's, that uh, counties. You know, like, Highway eighty nine moves all the way, where does it start, come all the way down. Keeps on going back. So please, please just use those numbers and put out these in there. But I guess it's still gonna, the BIA is not gonna do that.
Well, like I was saying, like, some of those roads that already have, like, BIA numbers to it, in Navajo, sixty three ten, or whatever. Like even Old Jito, they have their own county roads, San Juan County roads and all that, they, I don't think, those ones already have the names to it, so. They're pretty much won't bother them, but in the event that we have individuals who make a new road, and then you have four or five people that live in that cluster that use that road. Then we have to make a new road name for that. And so I guess the question is. Why are we gonna change that road name to in order to save ourselves headaches? Down the road, because I'm pretty sure, like, some of our roads that go into Cabato. We're gonna have a citizen there who are gonna be mad about that. And and I did address it to those, and that we have the ability to make it, you know, like, in in R A or something like that, Navajo, we're aggressive, something like that. Apparently, yeah, it's a little too, too much. So. And so that's what we wanted to bring in to you guys, to say, maybe we could go ahead and utilize NOS as a mutual.
Can our A for National, my voice, okay?
There you go. Second Amendment.
Maybe, and um.
Yeah, I'll fix it. Sorry, that way.
Or maybe A and R A P.
R A P?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I'm just on the project.
I think you changed that, did you on the rap? But um, okay, Roland, oh, thank you, Stu.
Uh. I'll, I'll tell you from the business side, yeah, we always deal with. We, we all know that uh, we share with the net. We're territorial. So uh, anything that comes to our table. The spirits, I don't know, it varies in permit. But that was him, well, um. It usually leads to uh customer use, uh, something someone measuring area of, okay. By the way, you're connected. I know, um. Anything, uh, say like, uh, they take care, I, I know down the road, somebody's gonna say, uh. Yes, I've been killed by a king. You hear, I feel like, or clearly, not just. They were, they're gonna, down the road, they're gonna start using, say, now, that, that, that's only the manner, but that, and yeah, we, we should talk about this, so, uh, thank you, Kirk.
Sheriff. I said, I can't read about the direction, R A P.
All right, we got one objective for rap, R A P?
Yep.
And NOS. I guess, anybody else having any suggestions on how we could avoid all that?
Um. For me, it would be, um. I mean, it's already in the work process. And um, like what Roland says, is we're between characters for all of that stuff. But a road is a road there. Wherever it begins, the beginning of the road to the end, it should go that way. So anything from highway to highway, it starts from there and it goes however alternate it'll go, that road is the same from the beginning to the end. So that's how, that's how it is until it crosses like eight one sixty, or don't could they, uh, the eighty nine or ninety eight, auto right cross, yeah. Again, so it meets, it meets, it meets. So those highway numbers are at no jurisdiction, just runs, as long as people, if we make it more confusing. We're confusing the people on, on the map will be looking at it, a junction here, end right here, will, will turn into another. I mean, like I said, from the beginning to the end, it should be the same number carrying all the way, whatever it was written. And then RP, I mean, it's R A P, it's sort of project. Um, it would be something. My, my thoughts.
Okay, um.
Yeah, the second table.
Um, with the NOS, I think it would be more easier to understand because we are in the NOS region. And looking at perspective, emergency, um, emergency, you know. Area, nine hour area, I think it'll help identify where the residents live to keep it within that, like, NOS region. I love the movement.
I said, I also like to state that Route sixteen that runs here into, at the Uta border, comes for eight eight. So, I mean, it's a little bit congested, and I think a lot of it is problems like this, so. Whatever we can agree on, the other thing is. Well, if not, I think this goes anymore, vice versa, I mean. What happens?
Since that uh we've been received the uh the number, road number. And with, apparently, there was a desire that was complete, signed to certain individuals. Check their height. There was, and I hit with those states in and post the numbers. Uh, maybe not understanding completely what the the purpose of those horses of road numbers are. All that came was the go out, post these numbers, these, these are the road, road systems are. One is developed by branch of roads. B I A. Another one is developed by D O J. Oh wait, not D O J, but in dots. And then you hire a consultant. And uh, work with these uh, road systems. I don't know who does have, Arizona probably has also a road system numbers. So road numbers are continuous. As you can see, they Highway twenty five in New Mexico runs all the way up with the north of the sun. I fifteen comes down. They continue. So you have to understand that these and also the street of cities and towns and cities are also continues, even if there's a mountain right here. The street numbers, the name will continue at the other side of the mountain. It doesn't end at the base of the mountain. But that, that type of way. Understanding. So as I understand, Navajo Mountain, off the side of the area. The numbers were posted. But at the wrong place. So we have to pull those numbers, post up, and review. So with I have to sit down and review these. And, and uh ready to, thank you.
Well. The one thing I want to mention that with um, Navajo Mountain and stuff, we can been at some of the times, ordered in place, and then that, Chantel, Chantel. I guess are maybe starting their portion, and getting the road names, and then they're gonna need their verification, you guys. Um. We have already printed out our signs already. But the project is going to go ahead and re, is gonna recreate the signs, you know, with, with we be. For, for the, for the two entities that already didn't hurt. So, I guess.
Is there, is there a reason why we just made them wrapped to their role?
Well, from what I understand. They wanted to sort of simplify this whole thing, because, you know, we already have our, 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 our areas. So when it comes down to the Navajo Nation Police Department. Now they're saying, I live off a T B K road, they automatically know that's something good. Or vice versa, Old Dato, they'll know it's Old Dato, they'll know it's not Mountain. And that kind of would help the, the response to hurry up and try to allocate resources to that location. And I think that's the reason why they were wanting to go with this. But now, if we go ahead and generalize it to NOS, then it's kind of like, okay, now we know it's a NOS. Where is it at in NOS?
Well, they told us a different, they told us we couldn't use our chapter. Names and things of it, that we would have to
Well.
think of something else, so I think um, this, this information that's came started, this amazing.
Uh huh.
Um, and maybe as two thousands, uh learning as they go. There are some issues related to that.
No.
I think really overall, um. They just told us that we needed to assign numbers in a letter, leaving a general letter, but it shouldn't associate that with the chapter. So that was instructions we were sending.
Okay, so. The thing you brought up, the uh, the letter, so I'm gonna give you an example here. Um, this is the type of letter that the uh, chapters would be sending out. And I wouldn't answer this. So what happens is, it doesn't affiliate the person's name or anything like that, it's just going to the, their structure. And so based off of this, basically, is gonna be, it's like, you know, the chapter sort of acknowledging, saying that, okay, this is your rule addressing, this is your address now. And, you know, then you can give it to them. So um, I, as the chapter president, went ahead and said, we'll go ahead and issue that out, this because uh, Navajo Nation. The Navajo Nation, the ruler addressing department, which is um, MC Baldwin's department, he because he didn't want to sign off on this. Um. Because he wants to do the overall route. Willis.
So if you're talking about that, I mean. On the news outside, we have a like where I live, it's called the G road. Remember, the stand up for the road, it's a block there. And then uh, the main road is uh, four twenty seven, that's the Chantel Road number. And now it's under G I A or um N dot, or it's in dot four twenty seven, they kept that number. And uh so that were called one third road, they have under management portion. It's the little first road that goes to people's homes. And that's like, um. That's how, how it is, you know, they have a shooting, so. That's how it is on, on that side of Utah. We're on the side, we have that. And then we eat things to that side of this.
Okay. So right now, if they said if those road names are already in the system, like, let's say, FEMA or the B I A or anything. If it's already in the system. Then it should be able to pop up. But if it's not in the system like with, um
Shut my head, yes.
Like with my uh vice, Secretary of Transit is here, it has Condrose Drive on version. But as I think, can we can't read anything? Submit the paperwork or anything like that, to make it a actual, physically addressable, actual street name. So what we did in this case is they got a whole new name. But on the police department's database. They pretty much put that in there, saying that this is Condrose Drive. And uh
Can you show that him?
Yeah, I can.
Forty three, forty two.
And then another thing is, uh, I thought it was the, the role addressing, the, the, the license plate, everything on the house. That's what they mentioned, and that's how they get to the location. I think it also provided, it's in the road. It's all change, yeah, look, I see.
Yeah. So, little, all of it.
Yeah, see right there.
So we have so right here, as you can see, that has Condrose Drive as a reference point. So like I said, if they're not inputting into the system. They're just gonna make those as a reference point, so you guys can have your little address on there, but for nine one one's purposeses purposes, is that they're gonna utilize the, the rule addressing portion that they sort of developed on here, but if hey, let's say you already have the G street on yours, you guys still have it there. But they'll have an additional road name, if it wasn't inputted into the system, it'll be Old Jito, whatever number.
Four twenty seven, that's both, Josh and Odin.
Okay, so, so we buy a county road, four twenty seven.
Yeah.
And that'll remain that, but you'll just have a
The street name.
Street name, that, that's locally, but according to the mapping system and all that, they're gonna go to this uh, this, this road here, the road name of sixty forty three, forty two, which is T B K.
So now, her house, I don't know, she has the plus code.
No. So that, right there, her house would be
Number fifteen.
Is it fifteen?
Yeah.
So the road name fifteen. Her, her address is gonna be fifteen T B K four three four two. Either Cabato or Tunnell, I think it was Tunnell, right? Tunnell, Arizona, so.
So, we're using a plus code, let's say uh, UPS or that next is coming by, develop a package, that's what we use, that, the plus code on your house. So, and then uh
So they're ready to come back in.
So the issue though.
On the roads and Brian, they know where, now we added um, the house number and then on there, so. Yeah, can they say just something?
Yeah, so according to, from what I understand, this project, you've got the reason why they're not wanting to utilize plus codes. It's up to the game, the chapter, they can utilize that. But when we use plus codes, you don't get like the actual the, the physical location to that one area. And it's not able to go into like like be a valid address, you know, like how when you go online. And then you're gonna enter a plus code, it probably tells you, you know, that's invalid. So this, in this case here, that kind of eliminates that to where that address or that house number. So this, in this case here, that kind of eliminates that to where that address or that house number fifteen. Is now is now addressed to TBK four three four two, then when you type that into. UPS or something like that, that becomes a valid physical address. And you can actually send.
Yeah, always ask for the audience to get that to the longitude.
Let's put it that way.
So that's that's what's going to happen, that's what this is pretty much replacing.
I would.
So, um. Wait, wait, uh, chair, sorry. Overall. Well, the municipality is like Phoenix, Phoenix is much essential. Of. The valleys, the. Yeah, municipalities. So the big line from Phoenix until Scottsdale. The numbers, you're running, all the other ones you've given into the renovation, sorry. Out of ten P, it's kind of a center. But when you get into Mesa, it's totally on your own. So. I keep thinking this, so that viewer could give a number and name. Or the code, they already choose to where it's at.
Yeah.
So. The way that thing that we're touching is we do our own individual. And then it's not corresponding. Uh, I'm saying the number is a road system here or probably. Add on the divided that number to the line from. The edge of Minor Valley Park to. The Rainbow Bridge should all be correlating east and west or north and south, so.
Yes, I know what you're talking about, slightly grid system.
Oh, yeah.
So you have your central, you have your main street. Then you have yours, the south from main street, all the numbers, they're all really, yeah, all over the street. And then north and south. And north and south, you have working.
You have a number in the lot.
And Jackson, there are avenues and streets.
I would understand that.
So now we're not a whole thing, but we go. From here, this straight line down to the mountain valley, there's a road on that side, the mountain valley, that's in both. Maybe that's what we should do.
But that was all of the chapter thing, yeah, let's do that. Yeah, so in this case, like, you got to understand, I I thought I was saying. We can't ask with the name, we like to be territorial, right? It's the same thing with departments. So the NHA had their own system. Kind of kind of unified, some district had their own system. And then. All the other entities, they kind of have their own way of doing this, and so. With when we have promised, when they have promised them, you know, we tried to tried to figure out how to go about doing that because like there's two house number ones. On that same street. In Kieta or over here in NHA, now it's it's two house number ones. There's no way to differentiate to separate. And so that's why they kind of changed some of the names that have the. The Kieta or. Or either if it was already known as a BIA, like let's say BIA didn't have it, but FEMA already had it as a as a road. So they kind of just condensed all that stuff together, and so. For this portion here, I think. Again, the main main purpose of it is to. To try to get response to whoever is needing help. And since we already have somewhat of an administrative boundary. We were just saying that they could just go ahead and use like this, the chat, I mean, or anything like that, so that they could get resources to those locations. In the basket, hopefully in the time advantage. And so. But being that, you know, we're we're having that. We can see the the issues coming up in the future. Where someone's going to say, I don't live on TBK Road, but I'm a registered person in Navajo Mountain, you know. That's going to cause people who are going to have that issues, but you know, we need like like everybody else here's been saying. That road is going to have its own damage and continue on to wherever it's going to go. So it's going to affect your voter registration too. Well, it'll affect your voter's registration if the person says, well, I live on a TBK road, so I'm not going to be. Registered in Shanto. Which.
At their own.
Which it's kind of, you know, it's kind of weird, but.
Yeah, they find out.
Yeah.
But the thing is, you need to do this. Like, 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 like that, that thing, you must have found about the. The service needed. So some people are. It's very difficult, but we still hold them there. So that. And I think this is still a patient, they do that. Like the same years, you know, we have that gift system, maybe somebody used to compare out the state that it. And how the sounds are separate. And then from there, we are all slammed together. And you say, let's not take too much time on that, one subject.
Uh, sure. If I'm twelve A, they include the challenge. Well, thank you, to work with them, to kind of synchronize their system from, let's say, Farmington. To their statewide. I don't know, their their number. We got to remember too. That's the Mexican. They work hand in hand with the state side, telling us. Arizona, we don't have that luxury.
Utah.
And Utah, I'm not too sure about, but. I mean, like I said, you know. I know we we are, I know they asked for the the maps and all that stuff from the county side. You've asked maps from the other entities, but again, they don't. What they say is that say that it's all Navajo Nation, you guys do know them. Because there's really no. Uh, collaboration between the two entities. So SDR and. See Hammer. You see Hammer, yes, they are not both together, and they they are. From what I understand, they're sitting together, it's just that he doesn't. Since he didn't do the work to what he wanted, like as far as getting everybody's. Worked in and all that stuff, you know. Which again is the older way of doing those things because it was modernized. He doesn't want to sign off on those things, so that's why it's going back to the chapter to say, they're really acknowledged, that it's sort of done. This is your rule address, this is your address now, that's it.
So can we just try and see if we can work with two entities, if they don't come forward. We can do another plan.
Okay.
Well, that's a move forward. That's right. How they reach out, you're kind of like discuss it. And then. How's that sound?
Maybe we can ask the states to ask for their. Uh. A recommendation on learn how to just how their numbers. Whoever's in charge of it. Or the. All right, go after that.
Just a comment, I'm thinking, Chair, thank you, Chair, and the chapter officials, I'm talking. I think that we should. Do it each chapter's identification, TBK, Shanto, CHO. But keep the numbers consistent. Wherever, like forty two, let's say that forty three, forty two, and then it goes into Shanto, it'll be forty three, forty. Three, forty four, then keep the numbers rolling, but where where. Where it where it starts with each chapter, I think we need to identify in the chapter SHO. Navajo Mountain in MNT or something like that. Because voters, voters. Voter, where does the voter. Boundary begin, I know I know time they're overlapping, they're voting in this chapter or in that chapter, but they're in this chapter. So that's what I'm thinking, and I agree with Robert. To bring, maybe we need to have a discussion to. The consultants that are putting this number, this system together. And so we can better determine what the next steps is, and then also. Um, discuss it with our constituents at our chapter that. There's just my comment.
This is about this teaching session where the lady did the presentation. She said no longer chapters, can insert their names of the. Formed the rest.
I think. Kind of dealing with her. Well, I think we should just refer to a club seat. And then. As we had that binder. And we have all those documents that. Club seeking work on it, and then we're looking to hear. We know that here, whatever they come up with, they can contend it for us and then bring back the benefit of the NOS.
The other, the other thing that Harry, you know. Uh, we need to. Develop a plan. For the question. Rather than having the top. Echelon. Directing us to the trust. That seems to be my my thoughts. It turns the grocery with. Uh, nine one one system. Police Department, Public Safety. And there where we can. Curtail our local plan to fit their system. That seems to be my thought.
Last one. Catch that. Club seat. You might have presented it to that. Yeah, I think club seat me grant, and I I think this should be where. The thing too is that. This portion of these mapping system is already presented to the club seat, which is my my club seat. Or Sapien. Kind of went with this route.
That would be our club seat, that.
Yeah.
Not it, I don't. I don't. I think.
So we can.
It depends on how long we want to drag this on.
Well, again, if we don't.
Yeah.
If we don't make a decision and then, you know, I don't, you know, throw Shanto. Wanted to go ahead and sort of get this taken care of first before signing anything off of. We have asked the Sapien, we're just going to move forward with whatever we have now. Yes, you know, we want to be able to get everybody else their address and whatnot. We kind of knowledge that. But again, if it goes back to the chapter, he doesn't want to sign off on it, and stalls that. From getting it to your constituents. This project here is paid for under our. And by twenty twenty six is when this is supposed to be done. So, you know, it's not a whole lot of time, yeah.
In the some. The areas that are unconcerned in content. Let's just meet on that, that ones that actually run that way.
Okay.
And then let's just get ours attached to it. Um, I think there's always hung love race.
Okay.
So we can do that, and that leaves on our portion, we'll do that. Yeah.
You know what? Help me with you.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So now that we've discussed that, move on. Give your center updates. The only thing I have on that is, Shana, I know you're. You're really pushing these things forward, but I need you to push harder. Um, and then on top of that, I think. I think the one thing is that if we can. On that legislation right now, for the one that was talking about doing amendment. I've entered the possibility to just make do the amendment for just the chapter to do the project on on the home. Putting that sub reciprocally, that's that's the whole thing I would like to get on that. For the additional portion, again, we'll do the whole list. Then we'll include. We'll include twelve thousand, twelve million this time. Yeah. Any other questions?
No, yeah.
Okay. Our update, again, I already put it in in my report, because I'm looking at anyone.
Let's spend all our money, that's easy.
Oh, you want more money, that's what you say.
Oh, more money if you guys don't spend it, then we're spending money. Still looking at the one point two million dollars.
Your name, when you.
Now we're just gonna have five hundred and twenty million.
We'll spend it.
My brother over there covered. We had, we had already finalized what needs to be done. Get that money sucked.
But if you need a last minute thing.
Go ahead and bother with it.
If you need a last minute, like you need to move that money somewhere.
If there's half a million left over.
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We're going on extension on the Navajo burial and cemetery within the North Region, so. According to my previous report, again, like I had already stated, we already went ahead and within this rule addressing portion, we already did take it where all the. The burial sites are going to be at, all that stuff. And then like I stated, we are Sean as a description cast. Stretch that from the record. Um, we went ahead and told them all our constituents that, you know, one year to get that in for four weeks, where all of the other. Lots into a community plot, and then at that time, no one has any saying to who's going to be buried in that location, so. Um, that's how we did ours, I know Roland, we wanted to talk about the one. And what was yours?
Thank you, Chef. He, last night, she died at college, and I told him. Uh, I'm speaking for Shanto here. I have it near. Any of our constituents asking for that. In Shanto, I know there's one family working on it, but. I I think they're. Sort of tied up. We, I don't know what the tone is, they haven't moved forward with it. I I know in our chapter administration, there. It it seems like you. It it's pounding it down on the degrees and official, but we tell them it's no longer that, it's. It's by me too, that's giving approval to. The the thing that that they are dealing with. Uh, barrier. Well, it is. I I think the the chapter needs to. Needs to open up a little more and help the people. I I know all of you, you're running with your projects, but back home. The the spacing, the the last, the last three months, I noticed Shanto, the TBK and that little mound. There's been maybe like. Three or four. People passing on within our chapters. So. Imagine the families are dealing with this this type of situation. And they need directions when when they're at their lowest point, yeah. And. These families need your help to to get to. To get their various. Family plots registered. Process, they, they, some families, and they have that family, they. They agree to. Uh, what Byron Batzui is requesting for, and then after that. If you get. But they need to continue with that process, and and I think. Um, we need our direction in, and with our help, I think we can. I get this thing going, I suppose. On over, I suppose, you know, heavily involved with the community. And. And that is the. That very. Say that. Lana, she knows that, so that, so I know some. About Willis. Lana, she knows that uh so that, so I know some is about Willis. Uh it. A lot of what I'm saying is, is going to be working through this community though, at all times. At times I, this, I mean. I got calling you before um burial system, when the ones that are telling me that they are. But my, my information was to be referred to uh. Mister Byron Batzui. So clearly, you know, which one I found to be that. There are uh local chapters, uh burials. Uh but the cohort, I know that people don't really. They want to, they, they usually say four days, five days, uh seven, three days is done, anything. So uh ahead of time, it's hard case to be. Okay. So then this will not have, uh, thank you.
I have a kind of a response to that, there is no clear direction from Byron Batzui, hurting. On how their group was going, but however, Shanto chapter, the administration is collecting the. The applications now and they're, they need to collect at least, I think they said, uh. All of it before they sent everything to Byron Batzui. So the administration, as far as I know, is hanging on to that patient until. Uh the final word for Mr. Batzui is also uh, I guess, received. So that is the EMM Chateau itself, um yeah. And I do remember that you were funding it up onto the chapter to do that um. And also that uh Mr. Batzui was involved in that process.
So, okay, thank you for that. I just quick question, just to crystal work, this is both. Within our policy, we had it to where the chapter, the chapter administration will be the ones who record. Are the ones who are the record keepers of this, and so. They would be the ones who sign off as to who's going to be in this location and all that, as far as community slots. Again, this is our policy that we passed while that is shown. No, oh, I think that's just an example of what we and something can do. Well, so.
Well, when we, when we first started, um we really got into it, I think, in January, July. That we've been informing, we've been informing people every meeting. And then I put upon myself, since I'm one of the chapter officials. And you know, only a few people come to the chapter, they, they're regular, but and then they, the others, they go until. They go through it, until it happens to them in a family situation. So for me, coming from a Christianity point of view. And, and like Roland said, that we have a lot. That happened in our fam- and within our community, so I took that job upon myself to go to their meetings. I went to the meetings and I informed the people that we need to start thinking of it. I mean, I went full course, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta go here, because how much it gonna cost? The schlegel. Uh that young, uh made it a funeral meeting, going to say yeah. And I, I tend a lot of them, if I get stuck, I always call my president. And then he, he walks me through it, and then I come back. Um and I, I just said, our president, this is what's going on, this is what's going on. The snow, and I even communicated with the uh mercury. Um to the city, and I talked to him and what's going on, and he would tell me. Quaking nona, quaking nona, no, so I've been, been a golfer between our, our uh. Our official chapters and then back at people, so that's where to get them, where they are. When we, and they know our meeting every month is what, but they choose a, is a choice. The general quote, you know, and the, so I'm there and I've been advocating that this is what it is, he got to start doing this, he got to start doing this. And then we, after talking to our um, after Shauna. He was over at Twin Arrow, she broadened the whole what we have, what she had to do them. She narrowed it down for us, that's when we really understood, oh, okay, we gotta go, we gotta do that. So in our last chapter meeting, we had three um family, community burial thing uh. They put everything in, so it's doable, it's doable and it's um. And, and that's the only way to go out, to go out to people, not just say, oh, we said it, we had an email this one, no. You go out the two where the needs are, so that's what I did, and we're doing pretty good. And then I, oh, this last one, you guys have two more months to go, get your papers in, Sha Hoshi. Before December, January, sorry, gonna lose it. I mean, I was kind of firm, but that's the only way to, for them to understand.
Then also, just to, we have the Catholic cap off that is. Us as the funders of this, yes, we understand that we have to be put in a position where we have to make some of these tough decisions. And like I stated in my report here, that. I gave my constituents a timeline, deadline, that they need to make sure that they meet that, because. If they're going to put in the process of saying, hey, this is my, my area, this is the ours, then put in the work. We will have the ability to assist you in getting those things, the resolutions, all that other stuff in place for you. But you have to meet us halfway to get what we want. So that's the reason why I was telling everybody throughout our community. Um that we're going to be doing this by the end of the year, and all these cemeteries that you see right here are all plotted. Individually done, I drove every single one of them, and then those will all be converted over to a community plot. Because we're not going to sit here and put all our thumbs and hope that maybe Navajo Nation is going to save us. It's, as you guys know, the Navajo Nation's track record is not that great. But as far as something kidding, that's being a certified chapter, and this is the plan and the route we're going to take. So. Then, you know, of course, I was just saying, hey, with my path, I did that all, but. We need to push forward, get these projects done, we can't sit here and remain idle. And hope somebody else will do the work for us, so. Any other comments, questions?
I'm down here on the chapter, do yours.
I got one, oh. Right at our money. Not scarred, it can also, we're looking at religion. In your Christianity. We can ask people that, be it for your even. So in our area here, down the mountain. Rather than people that have family lives and says. Yeah, but yeah, you know. But um it's the master, it's the government, I do have potential. We don't want that. And now get out of here. But we didn't then be, then again. In this age. In this age, it's just a. Asking us, you know, that's a very nor people there. That's a taboo, you know, no. Know as, you know, on the Trinity, we are. Other than Navajo Nation, because Navajo Nation, it's telling us to do. And our own chapters, some of our own chapter officials also said, well, you need to listen to the people, what do you want us? Is the Navajo Nation the one that's directing us, we are, or is it the chapter official that's pushing this? Now what happens when these people, they're not adhered to the uh. Now one nation has given out those uh director. Uh we emphasize, no, we can just say. That uh when there's times that we cannot, they cannot bury, so I'm looking at their family box, out of, out of my sense of. They've been in the, on. They did not, they're still going to do it, over there, it's very, very relevant. Regardless of what Navajo Nation say or what we, as an officer. How do we enforce that? We enforce it by saying to the mercury, saying, you know, you cannot. Fair that we can on the face of the body there. A little something there, you know, how, how, how do we understand that? Or do we uh say the Navajo Nation policy, saying that what, what happens with this on this first? Do we do make a work for them, do we do the labor for them? Because to the son in our area. We, you know, we don't get that, it's the, all of our name, and we still continue to do it. So this kind of what we shut down AI. As a great official to sign up the natural consent. So it is what we're doing on our job. Because Christianity, Jewish, so how they. They're looking to open up a little bit of ground and fence it. So our religion, our kids, the men, the religion, here is a. Followed to them with a taboo. Let's come on, bring that up, thank you. So um you just ran based off of that, you need a care. D D here, here is R D C legislation, ready C J M dash thirty three dash one five. Eighty E, that's all the policies and regulations that are. Biting at this because they wanted to pass it earlier this year, June, or February. Or sometime that, oh. And they passed all that stuff. And pretty much it kind of gave it back to the chapters to, 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 to do that, then um. They wanted to be able to, I guess, find out where all those areas. Of course, yes, and we do understand that there are taboo with all these things, but again, it's like. Getting aside with everything else, so in the case, you know, they tell us that you can't, well, you're playing with fire. But we can, us as Navajos, we're out there welding, we're making a living, we have to do it. So in this case, we have to understand that. We, in order for us to really plan out, making sure that we have a good economic plan. Again, us, all of us here are talking about, we want to have a brochure store, we want to have a Walmart over here, and all this other stuff. Well, if we don't have a plan in places, figure out where we're going to destiny, these locations. You never know, you might go a Walmart on a burial ground. Hey, you know, that's the reason why we need to come back together and come back and say, yes. Then again, then come back and say, you know, there, there are things that we can't say, talk about, okay, we have. Now, we have prayers, we have all of those things to sort of get us back in the, push them. Get us back on the right path. So then that way we have the ability to continue forward with this. Eighty E, you have those tools available for us. So, you know, I do those things. Like you understand our constituents' concerns about all the negativity and the taboos to this, but at the same time, it's like. We have to come back to what is the reality. We're faced with a governmental system that apparently is supposed to work. You know, we have to deal with it, so. Willis, we, we. Yeah. Uh.
Some of these. Policies that are being developed. At the Navajo Nation level, government level. Or to our. Legislation. How do we find it sense? A second chair type authority is vested with the central government. Is uh given to the local government until. The local government authorization is achieved. Okay. But just kiss all. I don't die. I had. Disseminated that information. Uh to those that I, I understand and know. Family burial plot, so no case, no response. That's. Uh. With the information that we have communities uh cemetery. That we are also notified that it's not, it needs to be certified under. Uh. The signature of the central government. Uh. What, what is the basis of local government act? That's my question. I thought the uh local government act is the one that. Gives the authority to the local government chapters. And exercise and develop certain. Policies. So. With their fashion now. We don't even have the staff. Needed to develop these. And refine them to present to the Navajo Nation Council. A quake. And so for Navajo man, not son, it's only. Two staff permanent, others are temporarily hired. A quake. All done, that's all. And then on top of that, yes, without spending all your money, you know. Remember, one time uh Senator General was, was going to sweep all the unspent money back into the federal money. Maybe an attack would be made again, so that's good. So I, I went ahead and said, let's, let's do a rotation. All the elected official. Be. A death. Review that they hear. Then we go, go ahead and detail ourselves to do certain section of the budget. What projects was fit into these. Requirements. What are they? Then we can expend these dollars, assign them, develop these projects, of course. There's a lot of unanswered, un. Uh. Lot of questions.
Great, hey, but it's, thank you. Thank you. Last one, Persol.
Um, thank you again, um what, what you were saying that. And then as a um raising committee area. Remember, I keep hearing in the meeting, meeting, the, this is a trusted land, it's the. This is a trusted land, when I attend that um. Um the governmental proposal replant formation. Um farmer, um Attorney General, Mr. Harrison Sosie, really emphasized that. Really talking about permitting fees and permitting holders of everything. This doesn't tell you, just because you have that permitting, you're not gonna claim like five miles areas, nina. And that permitting is for livestock, everything is for livestock. So the land that we are living on, the land that we live on, they taught the chief down. It's not ours, it's trusted land, and it goes back to the government. All these plans that we get to the Navajo Nation is coming from the government.
Our headquarters, Washington DC. It's coming down from there. So we shouldn't be blaming the. The tribe for coming with those up. And now we shouldn't be blaming our officials, local official to. Um, abide by what is coming down. It's to better, like what um. Um, our president says, to better ourselves, our economic developments that we have here. We have to move on. We got to move on. And this thing is, everything is for our kids. Our kids that then, um, a different generation, these Gen Zs and all these letters that Jen stop the G. A D G, but, um. The history is our history, I know, Father. But the. Future plan is what we're doing for these, for our people. So like I said, it's trusted land, and we can't really hold it. And the government will. The government will control something in some area. So just to let you know that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well. We discussed enough there, so. With that, we'll go ahead and move on. I'm, I'm to the German.
Okay.
No, Martha, I said for her.
I'm already waiting somewhere next to me.
All in favor, raise your hand. Nine. Pose. One, one. Stage. One. Hey, German, the time is twelve thirty, fifteen, twelve fifty-six, twelve fifty-six. Pastor with nine favor, one pose, one stage. Thank you guys all for joining the meeting. We will see you there as you can. I will be on the lookout. I'm going to be doing a uh, fun. To prepare for next year, I'm going to go ahead and organize a. A um. A meeting to go over our needs. So we can put it all into the two thousand twenty-seven comprehensive budget. Want to be able to do all that because when I spoke to Shanti Parish. He said that she only receives two proposals from Western Asia. So in this case, I want us as North Region. To get all of our needs, like the shortfall, anything else that we need. So we can put it into that budget. So we can give it to Shanti, and she can navigate through the money to come back to us. It's just not only not that I'm gonna do it for, but it's also a Western agency. We have a big old proposal to say, here, this is what we want. You guys fund. So if you're on the lookout for that meeting. All right, you guys have one for me.